For the City of Pacifica for December 19th, 2016. Could we have a roll call, please?
Good evening. Commissioner Behringer.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Nebelen.
Here.
Commissioner Gordon.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Clifford.
Present.
Commissioner Cooper.
Here.
All commissioners are present.
Great. And let's see. Vice Chair Nebelen, you want to lead us in a salute to the flag?
Thank you so much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we've got an order of agenda. Do I see a motion of approval? Commissioner Cooper.
I make a motion to approve the order of agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Clifford.
I'll second that.
Okay, please vote. And that passes unanimously. We've got some minutes from December 5th, 2016. Do I see a motion to approve? Comis-- oh, are there comments on that?
No.
No?
Chair, I'll be abstaining. I wasn't here for that meeting.
Okay.
As will I.
Okay. Commissioner Clifford.
I move that we approve the minutes for December 5th, 2016.
Commissioner Campbell.
I'll second that motion.
Great, please vote. And that passes five to zero with two abstentions. Okay. Is there a need for a liaison to the next city council meeting?
No, there's not.
Perfect. Okay. And moving on to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. That is not on the agenda. Time allowed for any speakers, three minutes. And I am not seeing anybody come forward, so we're going to move on to the public hearing. We have got two items, and we're going to hear the first one is actually two parts. And it's a consideration of a coastal development permit to demolish structures at 528 and 532 Esplanade Drive. The first sub item is a coastal development permit, CDP-378-16, filed by the City of Pacifica to demolish a one-story, 910-square-foot, single-family residence at 528 Esplanade Drive in Pacifica. The recommended sequester status is Class 1 categorical exemption, and the recommended action is to approve as conditioned. And the second sub item is coastal development permit, CDP-377-16, filed by owner Tom and Melissa Wilson to demolish a one-story, 910-square-foot, single-family residence at 532 Esplanade Drive in Pacifica. Recommended sequester status is exempt, and the recommended action is to approve as conditioned. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. I am Assistant Planner Bonnie O'Connor. Tonight I will be presenting two separate projects to you together due to the overlapping details of their background, location, and the proposed actions. However, the applicants for the projects differ, and a separate motion will need to be made for each project. The projects before you include demolition of a single family residences at 528 and 532 Esplanade Avenue. These two homes are located immediately next to each other and are the only two remaining homes on the west side of the 500 block of Esplanade Avenue. Ten homes to the south of these properties were demolished after the 1997 and 1998 El Nino storms caused extensive bluff erosion and made the residents unsafe to occupy. In their place, a public trail with seating was installed and is considered a part of the California Coastal Trail. In 2016, the two subject properties experienced similar storm damage and were yellow-tagged by the building official. In April 2016, an emergency coastal development permit was issued to the property owner at 532 Esplanade to temporarily move the house closer to the front property line. Today, the structure remains located on Jax near the front line. The property owner has applied and has been recommended for a hazardous mitigation grant program funding from the state to demolish the structure. A condition of the grant would dedicate the property to the city after demolition. The remaining time until the applicant receives the grant funding is approximately one year. Regarding the residence at 528 Esplanade, in December 2016, the Pacifica City Council authorized staff to execute a purchase and sale agreement to obtain the property. Completion of transfer of the property is expected to be finalized in early 2017. Funding for demolition of the structure has not been identified yet, but potential sources include adding the property to the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program funding with 532 Esplanade or possibly receiving match funding from the Coastal Conservancy. Demolition of the residences would include abatement of any hazardous materials, which due to the age of the structures would likely include lead and asbestos. All materials from the site would be removed and properly disposed of, and the ground would be graded to allow for positive drainage onto Esplanade Avenue. The lot would be covered to reduce infiltration. Conditions of approval would require the properties to be fenced to protect the public from the bluff edge and would require regular maintenance and monitoring of the site. To the north of these two properties, the city has received a planning grant funding from the Coastal Conservancy to plan for an extension of the California Coastal Trail along the 400 block of Esplanade Avenue. The grantor of the funds has provided written support for including the two subject properties into the project's scope. While the date of demolition for either of the residences is unknown at this time, issuance of these CDPs would allow for the applicants to move quickly in the event that future storms require immediate action or demolition of the structure. Staff respectfully requests that Planning Commission approve as conditioned the CDPs. The applicant of 532 Esplanade and staff supporting the Hazardous Mitigation Grant Program process are here to answer questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? I don't see any lights. So at this point, it maybe makes sense for the-- if the applicant, if the Wilsons want to come and address the Planning Commission, they have an opportunity to do so. You're not required to, but you certainly are welcome to.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. I'm Melissa Wilson. This is my husband, Thomas Wilson, and we've owned 532 Esplanade since 2009, where it was-- had stood vacant for a year and had suffered the ravages of people invading it and taking the copper pipes and camping out there. And it was pretty bad. And we put our heart and souls into that house. We took it down to the studs. We made it as good as new. We took it and we just about restored the whole thing. And then El Nino came along this year, and that was all they wrote. So we intended, when this first happened, was to move the house. We contracted with a company that lifted it up. First of all, it was in peril, sitting on the foundation where it was, because we lost 25 feet. We lost the whole backyard, basically, within a couple of days' time. And we were fortunate that these people wanted to help us, and the Planning Commission allowed us to get the emergency permit to get it away from the bluff. We didn't want it to fall and, you know, all the bad things that would happen there. Were unable to find another property to move it on. People aren't selling their flat vacant lots where we could move the house to. So we do want to thank the City of Pacifica, especially the engineering department, that there was this very tiny window to get applicants for the Hazard Mitigation Grant. And I believe there were only three, I think it was only three, people who were asked to apply. And we did. We applied, and they've been very supportive in helping us with all of the-- there's a lot of paperwork. There's a lot of things to do with a federal grant. So we don't know if we're going to get it for sure or not, but that's what this CDP is about. In the event that either something happens to the cliff and the house has to be demolished rather than fall on the beach, or if we do get the grant, then, of course, it includes they would take the house and the land. So that's the reason that we're here. Do you want to say something?
That's pretty good.
Okay. Did you have any questions of us? No? Okay. Thank you very much for the time and the consideration for this. We appreciate it very much. Thanks.
Thank you very much. At this point, we can open up the public hearing. If anybody wants to speak on this topic, they fill out a card, and I don't see any takers. So I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission and find out the wishes of the commission. Commissioner Cooper.
I personally don't have any comments. I'm ready to make a motion.
Just had a quick question. Whether or not this would take two motions, I guess it's actually two different permit applications, so is that right?
Right. There are two different permit applications for each property. And so we would take two motions.
Okay. Commissioner Cooper, I appreciate your suggestion. Just see one light. Commissioner Clifford, do you have a comment? Or were you--?
I just had a comment, and I would second the motion. There's no real reason to drag this out. This is actually a sad ending for that whole block. I was here-- in fact, I worked on the Father's house that was right next to the little RV camp. I did a lot of work on that house for Beverly Axelrod, and Beverly and I sat there and watched it fall into the ocean. That was one of-- the one house that wasn't demolished. It actually tumbled in. And to now be here and see that we're taking down the last two houses on that street is really-- and I do-- I really do sympathize with you. And beyond that, I'm ready to just second the motion.
Before we do, let me just go through the lights. Commissioner Evans, or is that Commissioner Behringer? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a quick question for staff. I know this is a difficult situation, but I'm a little-- I'm curious about the opening it on the timing aspect of the requirement for the demolition. Is there an outside date where you would want to start looking at it if it hasn't occurred by then? Or are we just going to wait until we absolutely have to do it because of Mother Nature? What you're thinking on that?
The-- I think the complicating factor there is that in order to qualify for the grant funding, the structure in peril needs to be present.
Right.
And so if we can't ask for the grant funding after the fact--
Okay.
So if we move forward and do the demolition first, we've unidated the possibility of getting that grant funding for Mr. and Mrs. Wilson and also for the city's demolition work.
Okay. Well, then let me ask you a little differently. What in your mind is the demo-- is the grant process? Is it months? Is it a year? What do you think it is?
I can have Assistant Engineer come on up, and he's in charge of our grant program.
Good evening, commissioners. Brian Marquez, Assistant Civil Engineer with Public Works. The HMGP grant process takes approximately six months to a year because of the environmental review. So that's the stages we're going through right now. It could be six months. It could be a year, and we're really not sure. But after that, it should be about 90 days to go through demo and escrow and such.
So just so I'm clear, you're talking about a year to process the grant and then a 90-day period for demolition subsequent to that year approximately for processing of the grant?
So--
Or is that inside of the year?
FEMA has already somewhat approved the grant. It just has to go through environmental before it's fully funded.
Okay. I guess the question I'm asking is how long will that house be sitting there on blocks until it's removed? I'm just curious.
We hope to start demolition in December of 2017--
Okay.
--at the latest.
Okay. So then my question would be, why wouldn't we put that in the condition of approval?
Well--
Because the house is still there. We're not compelling them. The grant process is already underway. We just have an end date on it.
Well, I guess, do you mean that the permit's only good for 12 months anyways? So--
Okay.
So--
So the likelihood is we may have to extend it again anyway.
We may have to extend it.
Okay.
But we-- what we wanted to do is, you know, in the event that it goes faster, we can act quickly. And in the event that we have more storm damage and it just needs to come down quickly, we've already have our CDP and our conditions of approval processed.
And if it was an emergency, would they still be eligible for the grant?
That I do not know.
The way I understand it is that there has to be a structure there for them to go through the environmental review, so if it was taken down before that was done, they would no longer be eligible.
Hope that doesn't happen then. All right, thank you. That was my only question.
Thanks, Commissioner Behringer, for raising that issue. So I'm looking at photos of the structure, and it's pretty perilously perched on the cliff there. So it's almost like a-- it's kind of a gamble. So the risk of making it through this winter cycle and part of next winter cycle is that there's going to be further erosion, and the house could potentially tumble into the ocean.
If I may answer that question, if your permission?
You know, technically, procedurally, I don't know if that's okay.
You have to reopen the hearing again.
What do we have to do?
Take a motion to open the hearing again. You can reopen the hearing.
Okay.
That would be done through a motion.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Sure.
Commissioner Cooper.
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Commissioner Behringer.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. We moved the house 20 feet forward, all the way to the sidewalk. The foundation itself is at the edge of the cliff now. Were the house to be there now, it would definitely be in peril. In fact, it probably would have been red-tagged by now. But we bought the time, and actually, the foundation is somewhat of a protection of the house because it's partially sitting on the foundation. So, I mean, the El Nino storms, if you would have seen the waves on the cliffs, we're not going to have another El Nino this winter or next even. And so that-- it was extraordinary circumstances that brought that cliff down. So there is going to be wind and rain and sloughing off of the cliff, but nothing drastic to that point. We're-- without anything drastic, we're reasonably certain it's certainly going to last this winter, may even go to next year unless there's an earthquake or something catastrophic. And that's what-- that's the reason we moved the house up, to save it. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd like to add one point that I don't think's been raised yet. If the commission weren't to issue the coastal development permit tonight, and there was an exigent circumstance, and the city needed or the applicant needed to bring the buildings down, I would expect that that would qualify for an emergency coastal development permit. So this really offers you an opportunity to consider conditions that you would impose on a permit as a commission, rather than being informed of a permit being issued by the planning director after the fact. So contemplating it now, even if this might not happen for a while, gives you a chance to have a voice in that process.
That's great. There's just a certain irony with the fact that the reason we have to delay so long is to have an environmental review, when the environmental review itself is posing a serious environmental hazard. This only happens with, I don't know-- So then, there's no argument to be had to expedite the process in those circumstances?
Not that I know of. I would be hopeful that with such a small footprint that the process would move rather quickly, but I was given no guarantees.
Okay, thanks.
And to add to that, I believe that the grant administrators from the state have been out and have toured the site with staff. And so they've had a visual of what we see. And so hopefully--
Yeah, they put us in-- This is a total catch-22. I feel like I'm in that movie right now, right? Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Chair. With the house being not attached anymore, is that going to bring up any issues about the grant? You said it had to be there. I guess just in theory?
FEMA and CalUES did not bring that up when they were out just last month.
And so they saw it on stilts, then?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I just want to give my heart simply to you guys. It's tough. It's tough. So, sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Behringer, did you have a light?
I think that was mine.
Oh, Vice Chair Nebelen.
I just wanted to clarify now. 528 Esplanade, I know that was part of what we were discussing as well, that is actually a little closer to the bluff, isn't it? That particular house hasn't been moved. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And we're-- obviously, nothing is for sure, but we have some sense. And we're on the same track with respect to time track with respect to 528?
So, little different circumstances. So 528, the damage happened outside of the window for the grant, so they're not grant-eligible.
I see.
And so that property owner, as Bonnie indicated, has decided to donate the property to the city. And the reason why we're interested is because there's a public purpose there--
Right.
--in completing the coastal trail.
Uh-huh.
And so we are hopeful that we can have some grant funding to assist us with that demolition work because we need all the help we can get.
Surely.
But we do have a funding source of excess ERAF. And so if the-- when the city has ownership finally of the property and we need to take it down, we can--
We can do it. And so that's on a somewhat different track than we're not necessarily waiting for environmental review from-- at a state level.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I don't see any more lights. Maybe we should take this-- so we'll take it one motion at a time. Right?
Chair, you should probably close the public hearing or ask for a public hearing.
Oh, true. I hereby close the public hearing.
Done.
Right? Okay. So let's just take it one motion at a time. Commissioner Cooper.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion on the second ones, as that's what we were talking about, which is the 532 Esplanade Avenue. Move that the Planning Commission finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approve coastal development permit, CDP-377-16, by adopting the resolution included as attachment A to the staff report, including conditions of approval and exhibit A to the resolution, and incorporate all maps and testimonies into the record by reference.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, please vote. And that passes unanimously. How about another motion? Vice Chair Nebelen.
Well, I'll make a motion with respect to a 528 Esplanade then, and I will move that the Planning Commission finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approve coastal development permit, CDP-378-16, by adopting the resolution included as attachment A to the staff report, including conditions of approval and exhibit A to the resolution, and incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Great. Commissioner Cooper.
I'll second the motion.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously as well. Anyone aggrieved by the actions of the Planning Commission has 10 calendar days to appeal in writing to City Council. Okay. Congratulations, you've got a CDP. Good luck on the grant. Moving on to the second and final public hearing, it's a site development permit, PSD-757-06, use permit, UP-965-06, and tentative subdivision map, SUB-211-06, filed by Xiao Hong Simon Wang, Pinkstone LLC, to extend the expiration date of permits for the construction of nine condominiums located at 1567 Beach Boulevard. The recommended action is to deny the extension request. Could we have a staff report, please?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting extension of a site development permit and use permit for the construction of nine condominiums at 1567 Beach Boulevard. The project is also required a coastal development permit and a tentative subdivision map. The coastal development permit was granted by the Coastal Commission on appeal, which has been extended. And the subdivision is not yet expired due to automatic extensions by the state legislature. Therefore, the extension request before the commission is on the site development permit and the use permit only. Staff is recommending that the commission deny the extension request. As explained and more thoroughly in the staff report, it's staff's opinion that the project is no longer consistent with applicable laws and regulations. New information about the condition of the seawall is a significant change circumstance that warrants reanalyzing the project's design and engineering. And all findings required to approve the project can no longer be made based on the information that's in the record. So therefore, as I mentioned, we're recommending that the permits not be extended. Today, we received a continuance request from the applicant, which I put on the dais for you. There's no explanations to why. I'm presuming that they'd like to submit additional information for the commission's consideration. So that is within your purview to either grant or deny the continuance. And staff is not opposed if that's what you would like to do.
Thank you very much. Questions for staff? Commissioner-- Vice Chair Nebelen.
Thank you. I'm just curious about the amount of time that the applicant has known about the city staff's position with respect to this request for an extension. Is this something that's been kicking around for some period of time, just in light of the request for a continuance of this item?
So staff carefully considered its position on this.
Clearly.
And I believe that they probably knew when the report was published. Is that correct?
I think there was probably less than explicit communication of our intent to deny the request. There was expression by staff of concern and inquiry about the project that went beyond most extension requests--
Right.
--approximately a week ago. And so I would say any understanding of the staff's position was probably less than a week from today.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Commissioner Clifford.
Now, if we approve the denial tonight, then the applicant would still have the option of appealing our decision to City Council, correct? So their options would not be all over if we deny the extension.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Another good question. Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question for you guys. In the past five years, has the applicant submitted a revised set of plans or updated a set of plans or requested any difference besides just the permit extension request?
Um--
I'm not aware of any submitted information required by that for the MND, for the MMIP. The only new information since the approval that I'm aware of is the seawall.
Okay. So do you-- so I-- they have been in plan check?
Mm-hmm.
And anything new in terms of information to planning--
Be limited to the building permit plan?
Yeah, would be limited to the building permit.
So just the building permit? Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Chair. This is for staff. Seeing the number for the original CDP, this was initially approved back in '06?
The city's final approval for the project was granted in 2007, and the Coastal Commission, due to the timeline of their appeal, finally approved the coastal development permit in 2008.
And when did the Plan Commission approve it? Did--
I don't--
I'm seeing the '06, is why I was--
Right. So that's the case number assigned at the time of application. So the application was submitted in 2006. I don't have the date--
Okay, that's fine.
The Planning Commission--
I'll just get a rough estimate on that.
The Planning Commission staff report is dated October of '06.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any more questions for staff. At this point, the applicant has an opportunity to address the Planning Commission.
I'm sorry, I don't have a question. Just as a point of order, though, I would be inclined, although it's not ordinarily something I like to see happen, I would be inclined to make a motion regarding the request for the extension. I think that we're going to-- first thing I'd want to say is I believe that the staff has done a really good job of laying out a very good rationale for denying this request to extend the expiration date of the site development permit. And that said, I mean, I do believe that this is the kind of thing that would benefit if I were in the applicant's position from an opportunity to assess and provide some feedback to us. If it's going to go to the Planning Commission, it'd be good if it went with the totality of, well, with the full administrative-- a fulsome administrative record. My own view is that we don't lose that much from affording the applicant a little bit of additional time to see if, in fact, there's anything additional to add to the analysis. So I would move that we grant the request to continue this hearing, albeit-- So I would move that we grant the request to continue this hearing, albeit, my view is it ought to be a very brief, a very brief continuance. But anyway, that's what I'd like to put before the commission.
My preference would be to have, to hear out the applicant on exactly why they want a request in the, the, an extension, on the request for an extension. Yes, council's looking at it.
I was only gonna add that because we noticed this is a public hearing, we do have to at least open the public comment period of the item before we actually take action.
Right. So, I think a motion at this point is premature, with all due respect.
You could certainly put one on the table, but you wouldn't want to take action on the motion until we've actually had a chance to open public comment and take public comment.
Okay. So it sounds like, so the motion's on the table, and, but we're still need to go...
I'm not sure he made a motion. He said he wanted to make a motion.
Well, if, whatever the proper framing of it, I find it, well, in any event, I believe that's what we ought to be looking at in the first instance before we spend an awful lot of time building a very significant record and spending a lot of time taking a lot of testimony. I think the first question is whether or not we're inclined to continue the item. That's my own view.
Okay. Commissioner Clifford.
My comment was, much earlier in this conversation, is no longer applicable.
Sorry. All right. So at this point, the applicant, why don't you, here's your opportunity to address the commission.
Yeah. Yeah. My name is Simon Wang. I'm applying for continuance for the hearing, of the hearing for the 1567 Beach Boulevard project. The staff report just posted last Friday afternoon, 1:00 in city website. Our engineer, today is a Monday for the public hearing, for our engineer, they don't have enough time to respond. So we, so that's why we apply for continuance. You know, we, our engineer needed to prepare the document analysis to respond to the comment of the staff report. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Thank you, your consideration. I really appreciate it.
One thing is about, on this project, my husband worked very hard, even lost job for three and a half years. And the city worked with, very close with us. And all engineer, all the, you know, people work with as a team, we work very, very hard. We almost the end, and get a permission put out, but city now denied to continue, you know, gave us permission to continue. So, please, you know, and reconsider and give us some time, and solve the city's question, everything, the problem, and let us continue, finish this project. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions for the applicant? Commissioner Cooper.
Yeah, I have a question for you. You know, I know people go through hardships, I know people go through issues with their work and whatnot. This permit, though, was issued in 2008. So it's been, it's been nine years. And so, you know, I look at the staff report, and I look at different things within that report. One of the concerns I have is the building code. The building code has changed since you originally did this project. And circumstances do change as well, just as much as personal circumstances change, requirements within the city change. You know, I am inclined to continue the item, but the granting of another extension seems to be a little bit of a thing. So how long do you need? I mean, how much longer are you anticipating responding to the city's questions? Is this something that you need one week? Is this something you need three weeks? I mean, is, when did you plan to respond to the city?
Yeah. Actually, we already have construction bond approved. We also, the construction bond, loan already approved, also the construction bond already will be funded soon. We already have the subdivision agreement and the Eastman Agreement record in the San Mateo County. We already got the general contractor code. So, if we pay the bond for performance bond and material bond, we can immediately get the final map record. Also, actually, this property we purchased in year 2013. 2008, this one is a previous owner. We purchased this one from 2013, we immediately start with the design on that. Unfortunately, the architecture company's architect passed away by heart attack. So, total design, got, you know, totally stopped for several months. Then, design continued after we found a new architect. They take over, then we start again.
So, I guess my follow-up question would be to you, is that, you know, the staff report brings up quite a few different concerns. Are you gonna, are you planning on responding in writing to these concerns?
Yeah, yes. Yeah. Our engineer, we already talked about, the engineer is working on that. But, you know, since this report posted on the website, your city's website's Friday, so we need more time. Need us, at least, should give us more time. They are working on that. They will, you know, answer your question to respond to the staff report.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Behringer.
Thank you. Given the state of the economy in 2008, I'm probably more sympathetic to their lack of moving forward during that time period, but we're now looking 2017 down the gun barrels, and the economy is better. And I think, you know, if we were to agree to a continuance tonight, the staff has raised some issues concerning changes to codes and philosophies in the meantime. And from my perspective, as one member, I would like to see those changes incorporated into your new plans. I wasn't on the commission when the project was originally submitted, so I would definitely want to see what that project is before I would be willing to support it moving forward. I mean, I have no idea what it looks like. I have no idea what the design looks like. All we see is a request for an extension in a fairly, in my mind, prolonged period of time with really no activity. I mean, you may have been busy on your side, but we don't really see that. And unfortunately, the building codes have changed, the inclusionary housing issue is now present and needs to be dealt with. And you've got the water quality issue that you need to deal with, so we can comply with that. So, from my perspective, if the commission did vote for a continuance, I would still expect those issues to be dealt with and resolved to our satisfaction before I would support the project going forward. I'm not trying to be difficult, but, you know, there are consequences to delays. And the economy bought you probably two or three years, but after that, you know, the economy's come back, and people would expect someone, quite frankly, to move forward and take advantage of a robust economy in the marketplace. So, I would probably be willing to grant a continuance and support that, to give him, to give the applicant more time to deal with these concerns, but we would expect them to be dealt with, or at least I would expect them to be dealt with.
So at this point, we're still on the questions for applicant period? We're not yet in deliberations yet? So...
I'm just telling him what my questions are gonna be. I think he has an answer tonight.
I know. Commissioner Clifford.
My question actually is for staff. If we continue this tonight, does that put a stop on the process for them in terms of, what I'm asking is, is can they, if they have us waiting for a continuance, can they go ahead and get their building permit and all of a sudden be able to proceed without coming back to us? Because they're in the process now of getting a building permit, is what I'm hearing.
It's my understanding that the permits have now expired. At least one, and I believe more than...
So there is already a stop on the process now? They have to get an extension from us to have that process move forward?
Right.
Okay. So I'm more comfortable with a continuance, knowing that. I did not want a continuance to automatically mean that the project was approved, the project approval stood.
It's a good point. And just to clarify my response to you, it's my understanding that they applied for the extensions before their permits expired. That request has been pending, they have since expired. So they were timely in their request, but they could no longer come in and pull a building permit today without getting an extension.
Without getting the actual extension from this commission.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much for that.
Good question. Okay. At this point in time, you guys can take a seat. We're gonna open up the public hea...
I'm gonna have one more question for the applicant.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. So, you know, hearing the discussion that we had today, are you prepared to respond to all the comments that you've heard today, as far as both the, what the project looks like, responding to the concerns that the director had for you, et cetera, within a month period of time?
Yeah. Well, big pardon, is do you, can you repeat again?
Yeah, these are the questions that the building director has had within our packet, and what they respond to you as well, is there's three elements that she's concerned with, and one of those deals with the building code, another deals with the seawall, and another deals with the housing issue. In your response, are you willing to respond to all those comments and give the commission a little bit of an idea also of what the project looks like, so we're not approving something that we don't know?
We definitely respond.
All right. Thank you.
Definitely we respond all of the comment from the staff report.
Okay. Thank you very much.
End of year.
Thank you very much. So at this point, we're gonna, you guys can take a seat. We're gonna open up the public hearing. Anybody wanna have a comment, address this agenda item? You can fill out a card, and you've got, bring the card up there, and you've got three minutes to address. You guys can take a seat. Applicants can take a seat.
My name is Craig Joyner. I live at 244 Shoreview Avenue, which is a property directly north of this subject property. When I first heard about the proposal on that vacant lot, I thought it was a joke that they would have an underground parking lot that close to the ocean. I see waves break onto that property every time, every time that we have, like, a high tide, a king tide. There's a lot of water that comes on that property. I'm also concerned about the effects on my property adjacent to it from digging down and disturbing the subsoil, and how that might affect the stability of the soil on my property. This property, this project has been in the planning for 10 years. That's a long time to cook a project. They're asking for another couple of weeks. I don't know what can be done in a few weeks that couldn't have been done in a decade. In my opinion, this project needs to be reimagined and reestablished. With no underground parking, they need new, new current permits that respect the building codes. I suspect that they should go back to the Coastal Commission, given what we know now that we didn't know 10 years ago about climate change and what's going on on the coast. So those are my concerns about what's happening on the property adjacent to me. I just think it needs to be scaled down and reimagined and come back with a current contemporary plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Stephen Clark.
Thank you. I am Stephen Clark. I live at 7 Paloma Avenue, so I'm just to the south. The empty lot is right behind my property. I moved in a little over two years ago. And I must agree with the previous speaker, I've only been around a couple of years, but I've seen huge waves coming over that seawall. Of course, a section just to the south has been damaged, and I'm concerned about what is gonna happen with, you know, the geological structure with excavating for this subterranean garage. And, you know, I have an empty lot behind my house, I know it's gonna be developed someday, but I'd certainly like to be done properly with, you know, concern for the environment, and concern for the conditions that, you know, we know are changing, climate change and so forth. And, you know, I appreciate your report, I just read it, and it seems like it's very thorough, and I think these are concerns that should be taken very, very seriously. And I too would think, you know, a redesign, taking into these, taking these things into consideration, and maybe an alternative for subterranean parking would be more appropriate. And I want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on this matter? Now's your chance. I don't see anybody else interested, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. And applicants, now you have an opportunity to address what's been said by the members of the public. You don't have to, but if you want to, you have an opportunity to. Did you understand that? So if you want, you can, you can respond to what was just said. You don't have to if you don't want to, but if you want to, you can, you can respond right now.
Yeah, I understand what they said, but our engineer and will take care of all of them, and work with city. I think city also concerned too. So, people work with this, and I don't think this will happen. So, and also, we, my husband have phone call with Dave.
Yeah. Actually, we have an expert, ocean engineer, his name is Dave Scaly. He will do, you know, analysis for this one. He already done a lot of job for this. He think this fine, is no problem, is safe.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that in the public hearing, he will give you the satisfied answer to all of the people.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. So, at this point, we're gonna bring the deliberations back to the commission. We've got a, we've got two issues going on. One is the motion to, the motion to continue, and the other is the underlying motion to, I'm sorry, the question of whether we deny the request to, request for extensions or not. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Chair. As we've talked many times before, this is a 10-year-old project, and a lot has changed in those 10 years. And a lot's changed in the land, and in our thoughts and in our knowledge. I am not in favor of extension of this at all. I am willing to look at a continuance. And I see that the Coastal Commission extended their expiration date to March 7th of 17. I honestly don't have a problem going to that date myself, but only on a continuance. I, I am not in favor of the project as it is right now. I want to see these changes, as we've said before, that staff has brought up, and come up to, come up to today's standards rather than 10 years ago.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Evans. I definitely want, there's not enough information in here for me to make any decision. You know, there's three important points. I think that the department did a wonderful job outlining what those three points were, what the three concerns are. I don't know how to address those because I don't have the information in front of me, nor do I have the applicant's response to that. So I'm in agreement with you. I'm not ready to make a motion as far as the approval or denial of the permit, but I am certainly with Niblin on extending this, so I can get some more information to make a decision.
Vice Chair Niblin.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I share the, well, I know I share the views that have been articulated. I think that some very significant concerns have been raised, given the amount of time that's passed since the original granting of these permits. And I think, again, staff has done a good job of laying out those concerns and some of the evolving sort of change in truth on ground that we've been looking at over time. That said, I'll just come back to what I said before. I think that as a matter of process, in this case, the right thing is for us to afford a brief continuance to allow the applicant to have every opportunity, every reasonable opportunity anyway, to address the issues that have been raised by city staff, so that as we move forward, whatever it is we ultimately do, we've got as fulsome a record as possible.
Thank you. Commissioner Clifford.
I guess I have a quick question for staff, and that is, what time would, what date would be an appropriate date if we continued this, to continue it too, in terms of the amount of work that's, you're gonna have to do, and also giving the applicant an adequate amount... applicant an adequate amount of time to pull together their responses?
You will recall, the first meeting in January is canceled, that wouldn't have been enough time anyways. So the second meeting in January is the 17th. I would recommend the first meeting in February.
First week in February.
But also, would also request that in, that the commission urge the applicant to provide us his response by the first or second week in January, so that we can have some time to respond.
So that you have time to work with what they've given you.
And that date, the first meeting in February is the 6th.
And I have another follow-up question, and that is, is if in the future we actually extend this, or don't extend it, excuse me, don't extend this, what kind of impact does that have with the Coastal Commission? I guess it's either way, if we approve it with changes to meet the city's concerns, what does that do, do the Coastal Commission approvals, or do they, they've approved one thing, they've approved what's out, what's already been approved?
Right, so if the permits are not extended, I think the Coastal Commission's permit is moot. If they are extended, and if there are some changes to the project, you know, I'd have to leave that to the Coastal Commission staff, and we'll be in communication with them if there are changes proposed, if they would require a new permit, if they would consider those changed enough to be a new permit.
All right, thank you very much.
Commissioner Campbell?
Just looking at the record and my memories of this project over the years, I feel like there's enough here to go along with the denial of, of this project at this point. But if we're going to entertain this in a month's time or so, just to build the record, suppose I could go along with that, but I think I should, I'm iffy on it, I could, I could vote at this point to not extend this any further.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. I'm going to jump in here, I'm actually on the same page as Commissioner Campbell. I mean, the design, I mean, the project is approved, it doesn't comply any longer with the inclusionary housing requirements, and, you know, the, the new stormwater rules, the building code changes, it doesn't, the design is not in compliance with those, the underwater, the underwater, the underground parking structure is in stark contrast to the failure of the seawall. I don't see how those are, and I just don't see what can really, what information can really change the, the fact that the project doesn't comply with any of those things anymore. I guess I have a question for staff, so if we, if we, oh, one last thing, I'm sympathetic with applicants' language issues, I understand English is not your first language, and so I think you guys deserve to have somebody here who can speak English in a more fluent way, so that you guys can get your, your, your points across in a more, you know, comfortable way, so I'm in favor of a continuance just for that. But in terms of, so a question for staff, if we were to grant the motion to continue, is one of the options on the table for the applicant to come forward with a redesign that complies, that brings it, the project into compliance with all of these things that you laid out there, and if they did that, then would that trigger, would that be so far of a material change that, I mean, are we back in this catch-22 issue? You know, is there a way out for them?
It's, it's possible, so I'd, if they were going to recommend modifications to their project, we'd certainly analyze them, and it's possible that the project changes so significantly that it needs to be reprocessed as a new project.
Right.
It's possible that, for example, they may be able to address all of the building code issues within the envelope of the building that was approved, they would need to start over with plan check completely, but, but, you know, if that were the only issue, that, that's not insurmountable, and it, and it would be basically the same project that the Planning Commission saw in '06. So, yes, both things are possible, and I wouldn't want to presume.
Yeah, you can prejudge, I respect that. Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. So anyway, so in conclusion, I'm in favor of the, the motion to continue. Okay, wow, everybody, let's see, let's, Commissioner Behringer?
Thank you, this is a question for staff. Assuming we vote to continue, would it be, or would we be able to see what the design is at the next hearing, is that something that you would provide for us?
Yes.
Okay, so we would have an opportunity to look at that, as well as the other things. And again, I agree, they may or may not be able to incorporate the changes in design requirements, and the inclusionary housing, and all those sorts of associated issues, they may or may not be able to include them, but at that point, we would have the opportunity to look at the total design and make some kind of a determination at that point. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you Chair. I agree with the catch-22 issue, I mean, to get it, to get this design and plan to where we're comfortable with it, and staff comfortable with it, it's a completely different plan. And at that point then, it's not the plan that the Coastal Commission has approved. So honestly, there's, I don't see any other step other than denying the, the extension, and almost have to start all over again to get, I don't know what level, again, I want to give the applicants a fair chance to try and comply with what we are requesting them to do, and, and that requires some time, so only by them giving, you want their plans by the first part of January, I don't think that, I mean, that's only like two weeks away. So I don't, that's, that's kind, in my mind, that's kind of tough, yeah, so. Anyway, bottom lines, I don't mind the continuance, but I cannot go forward with the extension, I just can't do it.
Okay, Commissioner Clifford?
Yeah, I tend to agree with Commissioner Evans on that, I'm having trouble with the idea of, of extending this project unless there's major change is done, and then we do get into it being a whole new project. And although I think they might be able to comply with the municipal code issues, the disintegrating seawall out in front of the building is a whole different ball of wax. I actually, I was on the commission when this was approved, way back when, and the project the commission approved was appealed and changed at city council, or went to city council, I'm not actually sure if it was an appeal or just part of the natural process. Changes were made there, and then it wound up going to the Coastal Commission, and it became a completely different project from what the Planning Commission back then had approved. We had approved actually raising the road out in front, new seawalls, a lot of other additional stuff that protected that underground driveway, underground parking, and that's, that's not in the Coastal Commission's approvals. They took all that stuff out and still approved the project, which I was really scratching my head over, but, but we're back now with seawalls failing in front of this, well, not necessarily directly in front of this building, but the seawall, essentially, the city council has said it has to be replaced, that northern portion has to be replaced. So I'm not sure what the applicant can do to make any difference with the property in front of them, the seawall and, and all the, all the changes that have happened in the last decade to the conditions around them. So I certainly would be willing to give them an extension, not an extension, but a continuance to tell us what they might be able to do, but at this point in time, I'm leaning towards going with the denial of the, of the extension.
Thank you, Commissioner Clifford. One question for council. Is there an issue with us prejudging, or no?
No, I mean, it's not my understanding from listening to anything that any of the commissioners have said tonight, is that you're prejudging the outcome of what will happen when this comes back to you at a continued hearing, if that is indeed what you choose to do. I think it is potentially valuable to the applicant that you're letting them know what your instincts are now, based on the information that's in the report, but I haven't heard any of you express an indication of how you're going to vote with additional information in front of you, and that would be the problematic thing.
Awesome, good, thanks. Commissioner Cooper?
I'm ready to make a motion. Again, I think that applicant, you need to be very clear that 1/10/17 is the deadline, that the Planning Commission or the planning director would want us to receive your response to the letter, and with that caveat, I will make a motion to continue this item until February 6th, 2017.
Commissioner Clifford?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, please vote. And that passes six to one. Okay, so this motion, so your, so the commission has granted your request for a continuance, and so you can, you should probably just consult with the planning director about how to proceed next.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate.
Happy holidays.
Sure, okay.
I really want you guys to have more time, more chance to review the case, and because, and also our engineer, and they say that right now is the holiday season, that this meeting is immediately, like emergency meeting, they say they are not ready, they are, some of them are in vacation right now, they say really help, help us and give all of us time, more time, more chance to review. Thank you so much.
Thank you, okay. So moving on to Commissioner Communications. Boy, sorry, there's lots of lights. So Commissioner Cooper?
Yes, I went to a very fun city council meeting last Monday, and this is regards to the Palmetto discussion that we had for the, for the units, for the four condominium units, pretty much the same discussions that we had, that we went over, wanting the four bungalows, that wasn't where we are, we're pushed into a corner, and they ended up agreeing with us with one negative by the mayor, but the rest of them did approve and upheld our reasoning.
Thank you for that report. Commissioner Clifford?
Well, one, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday, so we're not going to see each other again until after those holidays are over. And two, I had a quick question for staff in terms of our reappointments cycle. I know we are doing one thing, but our bylaws actually state that we do things at the end of December, so I'd like to see the bylaws brought up to date. I think I, I mentioned this when I came, came back on, but the bylaws say that we do things, I believe the last meeting in December, and we actually change, change everything around March, April, somewhere in there?
Yeah, the bylaws say the end of the year, and the council's resolution when they reorganize says April, I believe, so they need to be adjusted.
They need to, they need to come together, and it should be fairly simple to change the bylaws to conform to the right, the resolution.
Commissioner Evans?
Thanks Chair, I too just wanted to wish everyone happy holidays, and be safe out there, especially through the New Year's times, so.
Okay. Next up are staff communications?
Thank you, as I mentioned, meeting on January 2nd is canceled, the January 17th meeting is on a special night, Tuesday due to the holiday. And before you, there's a handout on how to sign in and use MinuteTrack, so we're still hoping to be on schedule to have, have the agendas through the MinuteTrack program, which is similar to how, or is exactly how council agendas work, and it's much, much easier for the public to scroll through and find the documents that they're looking for. So I'm not going to walk you through them, but they're there for you to just read through, let us, it's pretty intuitive, let us know if you have questions, and if anyone, I know of one person, but if anybody still wants to have their agenda analog, we can still deliver it to you. And.
Analog means on paper?
Yeah.
It's not like we're given to zeros and ones, so.
Yeah, I'm sure I used, I always do that, right? And sometime this week, they're still working out the last few things, but 7/11 up at Hickey in Gateway is going to have their grand opening, and other than that, just want to wish you all happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just had one question, so what's the, so the plan is to go paperless on the, for the staff reports and the plans and everything like that, we usually, is that the idea?
The idea, yes.
Okay. And what's the timeline for that?
We're hoping to start, we still have a few kinks to work out, but we're hoping to start on the 17th.
January, wow, okay, cool.
And are we going to be getting laptops like the council has? Or do we have to supply our own?
Do we have to print it out ourselves?
Have to supply your own.
It's what we're paid for.
Yeah, all those big, all those big checks the city, right?
Yeah, this job's starting to change.
I think I'm going to go with paper.
All right.
And it is, the benefit, not only is it green, but it's a huge benefit to the public and transparency, it's really difficult to scroll through those PDFs online, and so if, if, you know, bringing, if you're commuting and you don't have your laptop with you, and it's just hard, we'll still print them out if you would like them, but the major benefit is that people will be able to find what they're looking for easier.
Great.
I see.
Sounds good. Okay, we've reached the end of the line here. Commissioner Cooper?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Clifford?
I'll second that motion.
Please vote. And that passes seven to zero. Thank you and good night.
Happy holidays everyone. Happy holidays, yes. Ho, ho, ho.